If everybody could come in and take a seat, we'll get started here. I want to thank everybody for coming. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager. And before we get started, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our mayor, Mayor David Tarter, and he'll make some welcoming remarks, then we'll get underway.
Thank you. I'll be brief. But first, I'd like to thank you all for coming out on such a nasty day. We really appreciate you being here with us, and we especially appreciate your input. This is always a difficult time and a challenging time. We really want to hear from our community what you all think. So, thank you. Welcome today. Thank you for coming out. And this is a long process. Today's not -- today's really the beginning, not the end. We have a number of meetings. Mr. Shields can give you a list of the meetings. We have another town hall coming up, I think, in April, and multiple city council meetings, work sessions, and we would invite you all to participate with those. Two of my council colleagues are here with me, Vice Mayor Snyder, Councilman Phil Duncan is here as well. And on behalf of everyone in City Council, we'd be delighted to hear from you personally. If anyone wants to send us an email, call us, or even meet with us, we'd be happy to get together with you. So, we really do want to hear what you have to say. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you.
Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, what we try to do in a town hall meeting like this is present some information and then have a community discussion, questions, answers, and input into the budget process. The City Council, one of the great things about the City of Falls Church is that we're small enough that we have town hall meetings like this where citizens really do make a big difference in terms of the council's view of the decisions that are before us for budgeting. So, what I will do is I'll go through just a number of slides with a budget overview, then turn it over to the school board chairman, Mr. Castillo, and he will present information on the school board budget request to the City Council. And then with -- after those two presentations, we'll have questions and answers. A couple of resources. We have a budget schedule that's outside that you all can take away, help you track the progress of the budget, and then just a quick overview of the budget as a one-pager as well, and also just a way to be involved. A couple of things that we've talked about in terms of the context for our budget this year. The council's really laid out clear priorities over multiple years with a focus on investment in infrastructure that we need to do as a city, and a focus on economic development to grow our tax base and also bring amenities and new commerce to the city that will help us with our long-term sustainability as a city. But with that focus, we do have a lot of progress and a lot of momentum that is gathering. We have park improvements throughout the city with the Howard-Herman Stream Valley Park Project, the West End Park that's underway, under construction right now, and the Tanner Hill Historic Site, which opened this winter. We have stormwater improvements going on throughout the city. The big ones, like here behind Community, the Community Center, to avoid, mitigate flooding downstream on Great Falls and Little Falls Streets, a similar project over at the Thackeray Preschool, to try to hold that stormwater back and prevent downstream flooding and improve water quality for the Chesapeake Bay as well. And we're doing a lot of maintenance. This is an underground vault at Trips Run. You take that debris out of that underground vault and mitigate flooding for those neighborhoods as well. A lot of investment in our facilities. We opened the Thackeray Preschool this winter. We have investments underway right now at City Hall for police and public safety, and Mount Daniel is in permit review right now with Fairfax County. A great deal of activity in the private sector. Everyone sees that activity. In FY '16, we have $88 million of new commercial construction that's coming onto our tax rolls this year, which is generating $1.1 million of revenue. That's 3 cents on the tax rate right there that's coming from the cranes that you see and the new hotel and other commercial activity in the city. All of these things are very positive, but they -- there's no question, they create new opportunities, new challenges, and new complexity. And we need a budget as an opportunity to make sure that we've got the right resources, the right tools, to be able to handle the complexity and the opportunities that are before us. But we're very involved in the region and a lot of initiatives to bring regional transportation funding to the city, to participate in regional emergency preparedness and resilience. Environmental sustainability is a high priority for the City Council and for the city, and also maintaining our community character, even with all the change that is happening. And so, that's some background. And now, here are some numbers. Overall, with the general government budget that I have presented to the City Council just this week, we have a growth of spending for general government services of 1.5% or $530,000 of new expenditures. The school board's request is a 5.3% increase in spending, or just under $2 million. Overall, about a 3.1% increase in spending for the entire budget. The council laid out budget guidance back in January. One of the key things was for general government services, they called for no tax rate increase for that, and other key points in the guidance that I'll speak to with the upcoming slides. But in terms of complying with that, what that means for the real estate tax rate, if we have organic revenue growth with no tax rate change at all, that's a 4.1% increase in revenues. If we take care of our debt service increase for the Mount Daniel expansion, take care of some use of fund balance for operations that is in the FY '15 budget, we have $1 million or 1.5% increase in revenues that we really can use to grow our operating expenditures without a tax rate change. So, the general government has come in within that compliance. The school board has asked for $1.9 million in all-in. We have a funding gap then of $1.4 million, which would require a 4 cent increase in the tax rate to have a balanced budget. And so, what is -- what we would propose to the council, and the council will discuss this at work session on Monday night, is at least a first reading for an ordinance of a tax rate, and what is drafted in the documents is a tax rate of $134.5. And we would have a public hearing on that, three public hearings before adoption, and the council will make the final decision on that on April 27. Here's a summary of our revenues. The real estate taxes with that increase in the tax rate would increase 8.4%. Local taxes are relatively flat, and this is something that's true across the region with sequestration, with the slowdown in federal spending. A lot of those local taxes, like sales taxes, meals taxes, business license taxes, have been pretty flat. We're actually behind a little bit in our current budget year, so our forecast for next year is a 1% increase. Overall, revenues would grow by 3.2%. Assessed values in the city, single-family homes are growing by 3.7%. There is a lot of variance this year, neighborhood to neighborhood, in terms of what people are experiencing with the assessed value for their property, but it is all driven off of the market sales data that we have. But half of this growth for this figure is new construction, the tear downs and the rebuilds that you see out in the neighborhoods. Market appreciation for townhouses and condos, commercial still pretty flat, and that's been about a five-year trend. Apartments, a big increase due to assessed value growth, but also North Gate coming online, which drives that number up. Overall, a 4.8% increase in assessed value. Half of that new -- of that assessed value increase is from new construction, $88 million of new construction activity in the city. With a tax rate of $134.5, this is how we would rank in the region. And so, you do see your counties typically with the lower tax rates, and your towns and your cities typically with the higher tax rates in the region. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. These additional items are services that counties don't provide in their tax rates, such as trash pickup and other things like that. This is the historical tax rates for the city. Typically, in the $110, $113 range for the first 10 years of this 20-year look. Decreases in tax rates with the increase in assessed values in the city. And then, with the water litigation, where we can no longer take a return on investment with the water fund, and the recession happening at the same time, we reduced expenditures extensively in the city government, and then also had to increase tax rates at that time as well to make those adjustments. With the proposed budget, this is what the change to the median home tax bill would look like over time, with this being the proposed budget in 2015. It's a $611 increase if you don't include the new construction, and 354 of that would be due to assessed value growth, and 257 of that increase would be due to the tax rate, 4 cent tax rate increase for the median property owner in the city. This is a look at the correlation between population and tax rates. And so, if you take the tax rates on the Y-axis and the population on the X-axis, these are the smaller jurisdictions here, population in the 10,000, up to 100,000, up to 1 million, Fairfax County being 1.3 million population. What you do see is sort of a rough correlation of population to tax rate. These are all the cities and the towns. This is the City of Falls Church in terms of its tax rate, and with the cities and towns, and this is typically your larger jurisdictions and your counties. So, there does seem to be a correlation. I think you could calculate it as about a 13-cent tax rate premium for the smaller jurisdictions on average. Another key driver of correlation, I think, a very important one for tax rates and communities, is the ratio of your properties that are in the commercial sector. So, Fairfax City, which has one of the lower tax rates, has the highest commercial ratio in Northern Virginia. 33% of their overall assessed value is in commercial uses. Alexandria has -- and Arlington both have higher sectors in the apartment class, but also higher than the city in the commercial class as well. So, we're here pretty similar to Fairfax County in terms of the amount of our assessed value that's in commercial uses. And our focus, the council's focus, is to grow that commercial tax base over time. And when you look ahead to FY '17, just as an example, when the Harris Teeter Project will come online, the Fresh Market Project, we're anticipating $2 million of net positive fiscal impact from those projects, and those will have a very beneficial impact on our fiscal condition in FY '17. But we're in FY '16 right now. That's what we're focusing on. And so, we're making progress in that area, and we've got more work to do on that to make sure we grow that area, but we do so in a way that's in keeping with our community values. And then, one other key correlation, I think, to tax rates and education funding. The state education funding formulas are based on a thing called the local composite index. And Tony Jones can speak much more knowledgeably about this than I can, but here's the basic thing. Based on your local composite index, which is a combination of your assessed value, your income levels for your community, you get a higher score, and that means less state funding. So, we have the highest that you can have of 0.8 composite index, and that means that to fund the standards of quality, the state only provides 20% of our funding to do that. And you compare that to jurisdictions across Virginia, down at the lower end, 18 is the lowest composite index you can have. 82% of their funding for schools comes from the state. So, 20% for the City of Falls Church versus 80% for jurisdictions downstate. Compared to our -- some of our immediate neighbors, Loudoun County, almost half of their funding comes from the state for education. Fairfax County has about 25% of their funding comes from the state. So, I think there's a correlation with that as well. A few quick notes on expenditures. Public education is the largest share of our local spending. Public safety is 14% of our budget. That's police and fire. Public works, the maintenance of all of our infrastructure, streets, stormwater. Public facilities is 7%. Recreation parks and libraries, 6%. Human services, 3%. Planning and development services is 4%, and then debt services, 7% of our expenditures. I am recommending a 2.5% increase in employee compensation and a 3% step increase for police with no COLA. And that is based on a compensation study that we've done and completed over the last year. And in that, we did see that compared to the region and compared to this whole basket of our Northern Virginia regional local governments, that we do lag the market at the market minimums of just by about 1% and up to 7% at the market maximums. So, we did make adjustments to bring 16 employees in the city up to the market minimums. And that was really just to get them to the market minimums for the region. Our police officers, we restored funding for their step plan, and the overall cost of those was $65,000, or about 0.5% of our overall payroll expenses. In building safety, we are asking for additional positions in building safety to manage these very complex projects that are going through the process. And this is really important, both to manage those projects successfully, but also to make sure that we're providing adequate service for everybody in the city who comes in for a building permit. Just as an example, when the North Gate Project was going through to get their final certificates of occupancy, essentially, all other development permits in the city had to stop, had to wait for about a month as we were -- as our three staff were there to do those inspections. And so, we do want to bring in some additional resources so that we can make sure that these big projects are handled safely, but also the whole rest of the city doesn't come to a halt when we're doing that. So, some of our goals are to make sure that we can still handle these commercial tenant fit-outs when they come through, be able to have walk-through permits for simpler projects, and shorten plan reviews overall. These new positions that are funded for public safety are funded entirely by building permit fees. They would not be funded through the general tax rates. But with those changes, this is our city positions over the past 10-plus years. Prior to the recession, we were in just over 200 positions in the city. We reduced that by 15% in the recession, and we have been adding positions back since then, all to administer capital projects, to handle IT, and to now to address our building safety demands that we have. We do have a lot of unfunded needs in the budget, and we'll be discussing those with the council. Some of these relate directly to council initiatives, so we look forward to engaging with the council on these and getting the council's ultimate direction on these. Just a few notes on the capital improvements program. I think, as we've noted, capital planning is a key focus of the City Council to make sure that we're investing in infrastructure. In the five-year CIP, the majority of the projects are for schools, and the high school is the major component to this. But in addition to that, we have public works projects, transportation, stormwater, recreation and parks improvements, public safety improvements, and then city hall improvements and library improvements over the five-year planning horizon.
Sorry, Wyatt, I shouldn't be interrupting. Under what part of that budget does library improvements come?
I would be in the general government facility, so it would be in that slide.
Okay, thank you.
So, funded in '26, work would actually be in '27. We have city hall expansions to provide a central entrance point in the front and a secure parking area for the police in the back with additional parking above that secure parking area for police to expand the parking at city hall. For the library, we have an expansion that is budgeted at $8 million, and renovation for the entire building, and additional parking that would be a structure, a deck parking on the property immediately adjacent to the property that would be shared with the office building there. That is estimated to cost $3 million. Our George Mason High School, we're working with a steering committee of school board members, the City Council, Planning Commission, and Economic Development Authority to study our high school campus. And the basic concept is we have a building, our high school was built in 1960 or the early '60s. We think that we can use this land more efficiently, build a new state-of-the-art high school potentially, and open up some property on the campus, potentially 10 acres for economic development that would help pay for that new high school. And so, this spring and summer and into the fall, we'll be doing visioning and we'll be doing planning to lay that out, really refine that plan with a lot of community input. Overall, the CIP, we have $11 million of projects planned in FY '16 and 140, including the very large high school project over the five-year plan for the CIP. We also have some downtown investments in the budget using watersale proceeds, and we have a budget of about $600,000 for those improvements. We'd be looking for streetscape improvements, pedestrian improvements, to make the downtown more attractive and safer, frankly, for people to get, really to walk from the State Theater through Broad Street and connect those two areas that are very active. And also, to upgrade and renew our streetlights throughout on Broad Street, all the way from Lawton Avenue up to Haycock, to provide brighter lighting and more lighting right on our pedestrian crossings, to make those much more visible and safe. Here's some just quick visuals of that, but pedestrian improvements at the State Theater, putting in the brick pavers at the State Theater and safer crossings to tie that area into the rest of our downtown more visibly. In terms of our debt service, this is the city's outstanding debt today. This is the Mount Daniel Project that is just coming online now. Education debt is, majority of that is from Mary Ellen Henderson, about $30 million of outstanding debt, and then just about $14 million of debt for the general government, which includes this building, our fire station, and the first round of financing for public safety improvements at City Hall. And so, this, looking at 20 years, this is what our debt service looks like. This is our existing debt service, and it gets paid off over the 20-year period. This is the Mount Daniel Project. This is the City Hall Project, and then at the top is the debt service for the library and parking improvements. If we take the investment in the pension fund, which the council made just this past year, that's -- will be about $600,000 a year, which will reduce that debt service cost. And so, that's what this red line reflects. We'll have an increase in our debt service from the current $5 million per year up to about $7 million per year with a CIP, and this does not include the high school.
Yes, Wyatt, I realize this is not Q and A. Does that school debt, Mary Ellen Henderson debt, that's not including the debt, the expenditures for the new high school, is it?
No.
Now, what would that chart look like if we put that on?
So, that'll be the next slide. For those who've seen this presentation.
Hold your breath.
Yeah. Okay. I've got my medication, and I can take her.
All right. So, if you add the new high school, and we're working very hard to have a financial plan, but if you just take a straight look at it, this is what the $55 million of additional debt service would look like coming online in FY '21 through '23. And so, the whole work of the steering committee is to come up with a financial plan that will assess all the options and have a plan that is affordable and feasible for the city. But obviously, if you just take it as a straight look, it is a big challenge to be able to accomplish this. Our fund balance is at our policy targets, and so, we drew our fund balance down through the recession. We made a concerted effort to restore fund balance in 2011 and 2012, and now our fund balance is basically at our policy targets, and that's very important for our ability to go out to the markets to be able to have our capital funding for these projects. There is no money in the tax rate for fund balance restoration. That was taken out two years ago. And so, right now, our budget is entirely funded strictly for operations and nothing for fund balance restoration. We are AAA rated, and that's largely because of that work that we've done to restore our financial condition after the recession and a record of very strong financial management by the City Council and management, and that's why we were able to go to the markets and get debt at low cost. And so, with that, it's just a quick summary then, in terms of our organic revenue growth, overall growth of general government and schools, the new funding that is needed to balance the budget, which would require 4 cents on the tax rate and an advertised tax rate of $134.5. And so, we'll have a good number of meetings. We have a meeting on March 16th, next Monday, which will be an open house on the budget, where we can have much more engagement with department directors on specific, in the operating budget. On March 23rd, we'll have a detailed review of the CIP and a public hearing on the budget. And on April 6th, the council will have a work session to work through budget options, provide direction to me in terms of presenting additional options to the council for balancing the budget, ultimately working towards the 27th for adoption. And so, I would like to now ask Mr. Castillo to present information on the school board budget, and then we'll have Q and A. Let me get you -- whoop, sorry about that.
Well, Mr. Shields is doing that. Thanks for coming out today. It's the 14th. Feels a little more like the 13th, Friday the 13th, with the rain and the fact that many Mason high schoolers are taking the SATs today, so, and we're talking about the budget. So, I'd like to also recognize, I have my colleague Susan Carney here. I think Lawrence Webb is back there. Kiran Sharp is in the back as well. Thank you all for coming. So, with that, we'll dive in. As a prefatory remark, as a lawyer, I want to remind everybody what our job at the school board is. Under the Constitution, we are charged with ensuring and maintaining high-quality educational system for school-age kids in Virginia. That's our job, and that's what we're working to do here. And Mr. Shields has talked a little bit about the future. This talks about capital improvements for FY '16 and beyond, what the 10-year master plan is. Thackeray is now online. Mount Daniel is in process, looking to be occupied in the fall of 2016, which will be here before you know it. And then, we have George Mason and MEH. One thing to note is, in terms of demographic trends, MEH is going to hit and exceed its capacity limit before George Mason, so that is a pressing issue as well. We talk a lot about George Mason, but you need to keep in mind, MEH is every bit as much in the mix as that. With respect to the steering committee and the George Mason site, I'm not exactly sure what the date is, Mr. Shields, but I think Mason is even older than the '60s. I think it's hitting 60s. There are various parts that have different ages to it. But the map that Mr. Shields showed does display a very sprawling layout, and as part of what the steering committee has been doing, there are 34 acres of land there. Why don't we hold questions until...
Could you speak to us instead of looking at the screen?
I'm trying to do a little bit of both, but I will try...
...arrogant people when you look away and you speak to...
Could we, okay. Yeah, if we can turn up the volume, Cindy, thank you. I will accommodate your request. In addition, we have the 34 acres, about 10 acres of which can be developed. We've had a test fit that will look at whether we can build a high school and at the same time have 10 acres available for commercial development. It appears that the concept of doing that is valid, and so, the idea will be to proceed to find out what the funding stream, what the development stream... to find out what the funding stream, what the development stream, and what the educational aspect of the high school and MEH could be to accommodate all that. I would say, as shorthand, if we can get through the next five to seven years, I think Falls Church is going to be in a great place. And I think the George Mason MEH project will be the axis on which our transformation turns. Because if you look at Falls Church development, I think the big opportunity for us to grow and to succeed is going to be to knock down that first domino of commercial development in the George Mason MEH space, which is close to transit. And I think that would ignite additional development that could really transform this city, increase revenues in a very positive way. And so that's what the steering committee is working on doing. That's the plan, and I'm very optimistic that we're going to see some great progress. Now to the operating budget, which is why we're all here. There are three budget drivers. The first is enrollment growth. We're budgeting for about 5-plus percent enrollment growth this next year. So we are accommodating what we anticipate will be 5% growth. Dr. Jones sent out some preliminary numbers for inquiries. I wouldn't say it's pre-enrollments at Mount Daniel, but those are trending ahead of where we usually are. We won't know until school starts what we have. We have to take all comers, and we will. But this past year, we had a bit of a respite in terms of enrollment growth. Meanwhile, our neighboring jurisdictions saw 5% plus enrollment growth. We're a small school system. Numbers can change over time. It's a little lumpier here, but I don't think there's going to be much realistic prospect for anything south of 5% growth. So one thing to remember is, our budget is incorporating that assumption that we're going to see 5% enrollment growth. Next thing is competitive teacher compensation. There is a pay gap between what Arlington teachers are paid and what Falls Church teachers are paid. Mr. Block had an excellent piece this last Thursday in the news press. I don't know if you've seen it, but if you haven't, I urge you to take a look at that because it makes a very persuasive case for what that compensation gap means and, you know, what effects it has, seen and unseen. Because one of the things that's hard to track is, what about the teachers that we never got? The third thing that we have are mandates and fixed costs. Things go up. Retirement costs go up. Healthcare goes up. And so these are the three things that drive our budget. So as I said, we're budgeting for an increase of about 5%. And you'll see here that trends are anticipated to go up. This figure that we have too also does not account for new residential space that will be coming online in the spring of 2016 at the Tinnerhill site as well as the Harris Teeter site. So there could be some additional enrollment growth. We honestly just don't know. This slide shows a little bit about what some of the growth has been in terms of growth in people versus growth in funds for instruction. You'll see that we are doing more with relatively less here. Enrollment pressures have grown faster and more intensely than have staffing and expenditures. Another important thing is that Falls Church has a relatively higher percentage of kids enrolled in schools. This looks a little daunting. We have 17% versus Arlington's 9 and change. In Arlington, they actually look at this figure and are a little worried because they're pretty sure it's going to go up. The other thing I would point out from this is to say that one of the things that I think is very useful about going back and looking at some history in Falls Church is to remember things like in 1960, the census figures showed that 40% of this Falls Church population was age 19 or younger. 40%. The enrollment in 1965 in our school systems peaked then at about 2,200, 2,300 kids. There was a huge school system that once existed, and then we had a lot of demographic outflow to the suburbs for many years. Total enrollment dropped to at or near 1,000. And what we're seeing now is a kind of return inside the Beltway, focus on cities, our geographic advantages. I mean, Falls Church is in the center of so much, and the silver line is having a transformational effect as well. And so all that is to say, we've been in this position before. This is not unprecedented, that Falls Church is seeing enrollment numbers like this and seeing growth like this. But we're coming off a 20, 25-year period where things went the other direction. Here's a slide about the salary gap that shows some of the gaps that existed. We're working on a four-year plan that began last year to close that salary gap. And you'll see here, this is where we started. Sorry. Okay, this is where we started. I think we might have another slide about how this is progressing. But this is relative to Arlington. You'll see here that there were pay gaps that extended beyond Arlington. And, you know, one of the things that happened in the wake of the Great Recession was the schools cut back substantially on expenditures. And one of the areas that that hit was on teacher compensation, and that is kind of where some of the pay gap began to develop. This is the slide I was referencing. This is, shows how we are starting to close that pay gap. It's an ongoing process. It'll take three more years to do. But, you know, as part of our mission to provide high-quality education for kids, the teachers are the linchpin of it. I was at many conferences at George Mason yesterday and was really just amazed at the uniformly high quality of the teachers that we have. Got a great note yesterday from a parent thanking us for the work of two of their kids' teachers at Mason. And so, you know, keeping the teachers here is important. It's not just about money, and it's important to realize, we are not doing anything more than coming to within 3% to 5% of Arlington as part of closing this pay gap. So this is not, we're going to see Arlington and raise them 5%. This is about getting close enough because we have to attract teachers and we have to retain them. There's a great deal of what retains teachers that goes beyond money. There are a lot of quality of life issues, a lot of issues associated with our size that will keep staff, even if it isn't at parity or above Arlington pay raises. So it's important to remember that we're closing the gap, we're not going to exceed Arlington's rates, and that's important to understand. This is also a very targeted project. There are gaps depending on education levels and experience, and Dr. Jones and her team are working very hard to find where the biggest gaps are and to attack those first. So it's not just a uniform across the board X percent change. It's much more targeted than that. Now, getting to the budgets, there are three components here. The first is our operating budget, which is the bulk of things. Then there's the community service, which handles daycare, facility rentals, some other things. And then there's food service. So those are the three legs of the budget stool. The biggest one, of course, is the operating budget. And this talks about the increases and decreases. The city transfer goes up 5.3%. And again, I'd remind you that that is in the context of working on closing the significant pay gap and also budgeting for a 5% enrollment hike. So there's a call, if you want to stop organic growth, we cannot stop the organic growth of our student body. We have to take everybody who comes, and we're committed to a certain level of quality for our kids. And so if there's a way to put a wall around the city and stop kids from coming in, maybe we can start to look at things in that fashion. But until then, we have to take everybody that comes. We think there are 5% more kids who are coming. We're working to close the pay gap, and we have structural demands. So when you start to look at that 5.3% request, I think it, in context, seems much less daunting. There's a little bump in state funds from increased enrollments, some modest increase in federal funds. Other sources dropped. That is tied a bit to projections for tuition students at George Mason that didn't materialize as hoped. We're working hard to get some tuition students at Mason. I think we have capacity, Dr. Jones, for a total of, what, 20? So that's one way that we're working to enhance some revenues. And then we also have an uptick in our beginning balance. So all of that adds up to the 46.7. Another thing, since it's a rainy, cold day to talk about, is the funding structure. Mr. Shields touched on it a little bit. There's a great graphic that shows, you know, what the LCI is across the Commonwealth and how we are in the lowest level of compensation from the state. The average state funding is about 45%. We get 13. We are essentially, the local funding component of 82% reflects, and Vice Mayor Snyder talks about this a lot, that we are charged, the costs of the educational system are imposed on us in a way that it is in very few other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth. I don't think it's putting words in Mr. Snyder's mouth to say, you know, we are essentially subsidizing many other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth. And that is, that's a fact of life. That is what the funding formulas yield for us based on the perceived ability to pay in this jurisdiction. So, you know, between the state and local transfer, you see about 95% of our total revenues are either from this jurisdiction or state-funded. Other can be some grant money, some other things. There's carryforward that we're bringing forward from the past budget. And then there's a little bit of federal funding. But again, the vast majority of what we have to pay, we have to generate ourselves. Yet at the same time, it's also important, for purposes of context, to see, even as we've grown, even as enrollments have expanded, even as we've gone from nearly 1,000 to, you know, about 2,500 kids, our relative percentage of the budget remains fairly constant. So it's not as if we're seeing, you know, 2/3, 80%, the schools gobbling up the rest of the general, the rest of the city's expenditures. It's stayed relatively flat. Spending by category, there are certain industries, healthcare, education, that are people-oriented. You have more kids, you have to add teachers and staff. What you see here is salaries and benefits make up the vast bulk of our expenses. As enrollment rises, we have to hire more teachers. There are other things, benefits, services, supplies, et cetera. But again, you'll see, we are a heavily people-oriented undertaking, and there's very little prospect that's going to change anytime soon. Spending comparisons between 2008 and 2015, I think you'll see some useful things here. You'll see the salaries and benefits have increased. That's because there are more kids. You'll see there, over on the classroom materials and furniture and bus and technology, however, those have remained flat or a little less than flat. So many people say, if we got rid of iPads and MacBooks in the schools, couldn't our problems be solved? And I think this, again, just reinforces, it's people. And there's really not a whole lot else in the budget trend drivers. At the same time, it's also important to remember how much more we're doing with relatively less. The real cost expenditure per person, per pupil, inflation-adjusted, is about 17% lower than it was in FY '07. So we're working very hard to keep expenditures within bounds as much as possible. I would point out, at this point, I'm not sure there's a whole lot else we can do, so, you know, we'll start hitting bone and muscle if we continue to try to push this down further. This goes to the issue of fixed cost drivers, things that are coming at us that we don't have any control over. You'll see that, you know, there are retirements, city retirement, health insurance, and all of those things are basically coming at us as an increase net of about $350,000. And then finally, we have unfunded needs. All the principals would like more staff. Maintenance equipment is an importance, about $150,000 in maintenance equipment that would, has been requested. Materials and supplies. And then also professional development, which is one of my key concerns. There's a, there is probably no time like now where the importance of advancing teachers' skills, even as they're, you know, working in the classroom, there's a lot of additional stuff that they can be learning. There's national board certification. There are all kinds of conferences. Our teachers do not, we do not have the luxury of being able to send teachers to some great conferences where they can come out, learn a lot, and come back and teach their colleagues. Professional development is something that, in an ideal world, I'd like to be able to spend more resources on. But again, we've been working very hard to request what it is that we need. The wants really are not in this budget. And that's the end of my presentation. Shall we move on to Q and A, or what's our plan now?
So let's do that. We'll have Q and A. I did want to just note at the outset, the city council members are going to another event at noon, opening of a new business in the city. And so I just wanted to let people be aware of that, and that was sort of the advertised timeframe. It's 10 till noon. And so with that, if, when you do ask a question, if you could just identify yourself and ask for a microphone. The microphone is really for the benefit of those who are going to watch this on cable because this is being broadcast and will be reshown so that the whole community can see the questions and responses.
I probably don't need a microphone, but my name is Peter Markham.
For the cable.
I am. I'm Peter Markham, a Falls Church resident. And with regard to professional development, I don't know how much you think it costs, but just the Bay Foundation is begging people, public school teachers, to participate in their programs. I think a lot of that's already funded. Now, that benefits science teachers, I realize, but we can take advantage of that. I went to the College of the Atlantic, I'm a teacher too, science teacher. Went to the College of the Atlantic for two summers running. It's very reasonable. And as I, I don't know what just received. Thank you. I've got, oh, well, thank you very much. If I look at, I may be on the wrong track here, but for Virginia licensure, do you have to renew every five years? You do. Well, professional development could cover that. In fact, as I'm seeing here, this is an application for it. You need to do this, and you know this better than I do, college credit, professional conference, curriculum development, publication article, I mean, it's all there. You, you got to do this every five years to upgrade yourself. I don't know how that's going to be done, but if we're going to have teachers with certifications in Falls Church, we're going to need to do that.
And I'm not saying there's no professional development. I'm saying, I wish we could, no, 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 I wish, I wish we could have more professional development. But no, we're, we're...
Thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad to get that cleared up because I was worried. And by the way, the superintendent, you did give me the update at Arlington County pay schedule, and from what you've said, they're eating our lunch, really, for teachers. It's, if we're going to stay competitive, we're going to have to, we will have to spend more money to get teachers. And I will finish up with this little letter to the editor, The Washington Post. And this is from the Loudoun County Library Board of Trustees. "It's true that access to books really does matter. However, school libraries are open only when schools are open. A student can access the school library for less than half a calendar year. When the library is open, students are in class. When is a student going to get to the library? Investing in public libraries and perhaps even having the local public library systems take over management and operation of high school libraries," I guess if you do that, "can give students access to a greater selection of materials, more librarians, and other services this school system cannot afford to provide. Libraries around the country are transforming into central hubs of communities in an era of shrinking budgets and growing populations. Reevaluating how library services are delivered can make the difference in who has access to books and develops reading skills necessary to succeed in today's world." This is from Mark Miller, chairman of the Loudoun County Library Board of Trustees. "I think you've got a difficult job. This is a small school system, and I realize that we're in competition with a powerhouse. I wish you all the best. Really, I want schools to be funded this, you know, good luck."
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Aiden, you got it now.
It was a benefit to this. I mean, I've actually got a lot of questions and concerns, but you can stop me when you feel you want to give it to somebody else.
Could you just open with your name?
Pat Kennedy.
Okay.
I guess, one of my main concerns, first of all, I'm curious, I assume both of you look at the Falls Church City newspaper, and the latest poll that came out concerning about adding this funding for the schools, and sixty-two percent of the population voted no. How do you feel about that? Why, why do you think that happened?
The first thing I would say is, I'd love to know more about that poll and what it, where it came from.
It's pretty simple. They asked a fairly simple question. Do you support the additional funding being asked for by school?
Yeah, and I don't know how many people responded or who they were.
Let me start out with this first. I support paying teacher, I feel all teachers are underpaid, not just the teachers here. I think for the service provided by teachers, it's a, it's a service that is way underpaid and undervalued compared to, you know, paying gazillion dollars for somebody to throw a ball in the hoop, big deal. You know, school teachers provide a very important service. Okay? But that being said, I don't think I'm the only person in this city that feels that there's an inordinate amount of the budget that is going to support a system and trying to compete, like you just said, or somebody said about the powerhouses. We're surrounded by Arlington and Fairfax, which are massive counties. Is it really realistic to think that this school system can compete with them? You know, I'm not sure it is, not with the tax base that we have here. Now, you know, we're hearing the, and I think that, I'm sure you made the comment, in five to seven years, Falls Church City will be in, you know, I'm sure it might be in better shape, but five or seven years ago, somebody probably said the same thing at one of these meetings. And here we are, talking about one of the highest tax rates in the area. One, one thing I'm not hearing at all is, all this emphasis is on supporting the school system and trying to, you know, generate an income for it. This community is made up of a lot of people, not all of us have kids in school. I'm a retiree. I'm trying to live here, and it is hard. It's extremely hard, and I'd like to be able to age in place here. I like it here. You know, obviously, I could move and go live somewhere else, it's a heck of a lot cheap, but I've lived here since nineteen sixty-eight. I love this area. Not necessarily, it's not, you know, I like the DC metro area, I'd like to stay here, but it's getting tough. I just.
And, and as soon as I get my four kids through college, I want to be where you are, and so I'm, I'm also cognizant of that, I don't want to move. So I think one of the things that's going on here is, this is a pretty daunting situation that we find ourselves in. And some have asked, well, can we contract with Fairfax or Arlington for education? The economics don't seem to work out for a variety of reasons. You know, you wouldn't go to Arlington, right? Because their perpugal, perpugal expenditures are higher, so there's no business case for that. And Fairfax, they're on different pay scales, and so you couldn't, you'd have to do certain things that would probably, you'd have to ask the teachers, well, would you mind being paid Fairfax County rates? You'd have to ask citizens, would you mind if some of your kids went to Marshall and some went to Jeb Stuart? It would, it would be, I think, not only not economical, but I think it would affect Falls Church as we know it. Now, the big question is, you know, what, how do we continue to exist, sandwiched as we are between two massive jurisdictions? What is our plan going forward for matching revenues with projected expenditures? How can we pull this off? I think, again, to me, the key is those thirty-four acres that comprise the ten acres on the Mason site, as well as adjacent parcels, that if we can get that process going, I think you'll see in five, seven, ten years, some really great development. But I think, you know, the issue is, how do we, how do we fuel our, our demands? I think there's a, a great deal of need for updating and modernizing a variety of facilities. You've got City Hall, you've got the library, you have all of these.
Yeah, I mean, you've got a lot of things that need to have monies, and I'm not a financial wizard by any stretch of imagination, but this idea that you're going to put all the, that the big solution's going to be commercial development, at some point, I can't help but think, because of how small this area is, that your rate is going to get to the point where your commercial rate, people aren't going to want to come here, because it's too expensive. So that's something you need to really, I think, consider. I mean, I hate to say it, but probably the ultimate solution, I'm just going to throw that out, is that, you know, does it really make sense for this city to be what it is? Maybe it needs to be absorbed by Arlington or Fairfax. I mean, to, to push all this and expect, you know, the people, this little group of people to support and keep competitive with these two things, I, I don't know. Maybe it can work, but it just seems it's not, it's not working that well right now. I got one other question, something you mentioned about, you know, we have to accept everybody. Is it, am I understanding that right, that if people from outside Falls Church City want to put their kids in?
No, no, I'm talking about everybody within Falls Church.
Okay, because I've, major flag on all.
It's, it's not that bad.
Well, one thing I would just say in response, I think, I think these are the big existential questions that the council grapples with every year. What is the value that we're creating with our services, with our education services for the taxpayer? Right now, we are competitive with, with all the smaller jurisdictions in Northern Virginia. We're actually on the low, low side of all the smaller jurisdictions in Northern Virginia. But that question has to be asked and answered every year.
You're saying that, but I, I'm used to living. The services that are provided in Arlington, we're not competing with. As a homeowner, I don't feel I'm getting the services, level of service I got and are available in Arlington. So you make that comment, are you, are you making that comment? Are you really going out and polling people and, you know, going to house to house and asking people about their services? I, you know, I mean, it's easy to say stuff, but I, I'm a resident here, and I know for a fact, there's a lot more available to me if I lived in Arlington, and that's just the way it is. So, when it comes to this higher tax rate I'm paying, I don't know what I'm getting for as a resident. If I had kids in school, I know I'd feel differently, but that, again, I'm sorry, that was another point I meant to say, too. Is it, is it unrealistic to think, why not tax people that have kids in school more than people that don't? Is that unreasonable?
That goes back to the.
Okay, you tax, you tax people, there's a gas tax for people to drive. They don't support.
Okay. One thing I will say, I think for the, for the, for this meeting, I would ask, I think a lot of people want to ask questions, and so we'll, we'll want to sort of let people, let other people speak, and, and so I'll go here, ma'am, to the front row, where, okay, in the back?
That's okay. Hi, my name's Candace Dematias. I'm a new resident of Falls Church City, and I just had a couple of comments. One is, you are competing with Arlington and Fairfax. My husband and I looked everywhere for homes, and we settled here because of the schools largely. We have three children, two in the Falls Church City schools. This is our first experience with public school. Coming from North Carolina, we had to pay for private school. The schools are just, it's just bad. I wanted to caution, too, I work in government affairs, polling and statistically significant polling are two very different things. So if you're looking at poll numbers and you want them to guide policy, I would just strongly advise that you look at things that are statistically significant and done, not just, you know, online or, you know, I talk to people, because it can be skewed very easily. The question I had, given that I work in government affairs, is you talked about the state contribution and how much lower it is. Are there efforts underway to see if, how that calculus has worked, you know, have the state representative lobbying for that, to really take a look? Loudoun County is the second richest county in the country, and they're getting forty-three percent, from what you were saying. I'm just curious how that calculus works, and if there are efforts underway to increase the state contribution.
Dr. Jones, I mean, I think, I, I, I think that's worth looking into. I, I'm not sure what we can, Mr. Kimball, do you want to take that?
Hunter Kimball, I'm the finance director for Falls Church Schools. Very good question about that local composite index. As Mr. Shield, Shields mentioned, this local composite index was, actually, I believe it came into place in the early seventies, basically looking at, you know, the Commonwealth of Virginia as a whole, and frankly, the number of disparities across the Commonwealth, because it's a very, very diverse state, that there are rural and sparse populations, there are urban, very concentrated populations, and everything in between. And so it does look at the components of just a gross income. I think the single biggest factor, weight factor in there is real estate, which means, and we have some of the highest real estate values in the state, so we're always going to end up on top on this current composite index, and the other's taxable retail sales, which, because we don't really have that commercial base, that's not such a big driver for us, but I think that's only like a ten percent weight in this formula. There are good things about this formula, and there are bad things about this formula, believe it or not. One of the good things about this formula is, if you've noticed over the past twenty years, in the number of states all across the country, Michigan is coming to mind, but there are other states as well, and I'll ask Lindy Hockenberry, because she's, she stays much more on top of these things than I do about, about other states. But the state, the state legislatures and the state departments of education are being sued because of educational disparities in funding across, Kentucky, Kentucky was another one, where they were being sued because they did not have an equitable way of distributing state funds. Virginia has, there have been a number of attempted lawsuits against the Commonwealth of Virginia about disparity in funding, and thus far, this LCI formula, along with the SOQ, has, has been demonstrated to provide the equity necessary so that, you know, that in at least the court's mind, there's not the disparity that people are claiming. One of the dangers in looking at the LCI, and I'll be perfectly frank, because I used to work down at DOE, and I worked on the governor, Governor Wilder's disparity commission, once you open that formula up and start looking at it, there's probably a better-than-fifty-fifty chance that that point eight may end up being point eight-five or point nine. It could go the other way just as easily as it could go down. You know, politics are, you know, like legal issues are very, very risky. And I can say about the composite index that has kept us out of court, but to Mr. Shields' Mr. Snyder's, Mr. Castillo's point, we're sending a whole bunch of money down to Richmond, and we're getting very, very little of it back. And again, it's based on local wealth and on this formula. If the locality looks like they can afford to pay it themselves, then they're, then they're given that burden. But it's, it's a double-edged sword. And, and to be honest, it is constantly being looked at. It is.
Thank you for the question. Maybe here, and then we'll go to Mr. Lamoney.
Okay. I guess, my name is Kathy Rice, and I'm a resident, and I have one daughter graduating from high school this year. And Falls Church schools have been wonderful schools, and I've loved them for my, for both my daughters. I have a question, I would go to the new high school that you're talking about. It looks like it's a very large debt service, and that will come on within a year or two. And am I, I'm getting a little fearful here, should, am I wrong in thinking that that will add a lot to the tax rate? I'm guessing four, five, six cents on a hundred dollars? Is that, is that a wrong, I mean, I know I'm guessing. I know I'm doing a thumbnail, but is that out of line? Is that crazy, or am I kind of in the right park, saying that that high school will add quite a lot to our tax rate?
Well, we, we're in the initial planning for it, and so we're working very hard to have an economic development component with the new high school that will mitigate the costs of it. What we can say is, we'll go over, over the spring and the summer, we'll get much more detail, much more study on the options, much more public input into them. And then the last thing I would note is that before anything is done, the voters would have a chance to weigh in on a referendum in terms of the overall financing package. There's just, I think, there's a lot more work to be done on the high school.
Okay. And I'd also like to make a comment, not only have my kids gone through Falls Church City schools, and I used to work for Falls Church City, but I now work for Fairfax County schools. And I have to say, I understand your comparison, and believe me, as a teacher, I don't want to complain about teachers getting raises, but I think it is cherry-picking to compare us to Arlington. Falls Church is behind Arlington, that's true, but we're way ahead of Fairfax, and we are way ahead of Loudoun County. We're also slightly behind Alexandria. We're way ahead of Montgomery County. If you compare us across the entire region, we are in the front of the pack, okay? And that's, that's the reality. Now, I know you have situations where you've lost students or teachers coming in, hiring, going to Arlington County. That's probably true. I know in Fairfax County, we lose teachers to Falls Church City. I think you have some high school teachers who came over from Fairfax County, right? And, and that's the case. Anecdotal evidence is always dangerous. There are teachers who, there are people who do things for all sorts of reasons, taking two or three or four cases and saying, this proves my case. I'm sorry, we need better information than that. And at the last case I'm going to hold, I, Mr. Benton, I've got your paper from last October here, and the headline here is that Duncan says yes on school bond measure won't impact tax rate. Now, I know we're talking about Mount Daniel here, and the Mount Daniel improvement, but now we're hearing that the Mount Daniel improvement and the teacher salary improvement is going to impact our tax rate quite a bit. I wouldn't complain so much, but our tax rate is so much higher than neighboring jurisdictions, and that concerns me. I, I share a lot of your concerns, that we pay a lot more in taxes and we don't get the services that the neighboring jurisdictions do get. So, and I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm up on my high horse, so I'm going to turn it back over to you. But that is my concern as a taxpayer. And I, I don't mean to complain about the schools, the schools are great, we like those, but we got to find some way to make this reasonable, okay?
So what, what kind of services do you feel you haven't, you're not receiving?
Well, okay, I'm, I'm going to go, the list that occurs to mind, and this may be a little unfair, because I have not raises with any city department, but there are weeds growing through the asphalt on my street, and there have been for several years, and nobody's res serviced my street. The homeless, we have a small homeless shelter that's open a couple of months a year. Arlington provides amazing services for their homeless people, and there are homeless people in this area. Those services are amazing. Arlington has pools. Arlington will deliver mulch to your house. Arlington has amazing parks for people raising their kids. Their parks are fantastic over there. We have nice parks, but they're not Arlington's parks. Arlington, you know, you have yard waste, Arlington gives you free bags, we pay for them here. And, and that's just what comes to mind as you ask that question. There are a lot more services that Arlington has. And I, I still, I like Falls Church City, I'm not looking to jump, but I am saying that I think we have an awful lot of, we need to find some sort of balance. We should not have this way higher tax rate and way fewer services. We've got to find some way to try to, to at least not increase the rate and continue to increase the disparity in the tax rates. Okay, I'll, I'll get off my high horse, sorry.
John Limoney, I'm also a resident of Falls Church. I've been through several years of these budget discussions, and it always turns around the school. And I have, I, I like to post something that I think addresses what these two residents have, have raised as well. I noticed that the school always shows the drivers of, and it's a very, very useful analysis, the drivers are, one of the big drivers is, of course, the increase in enrollment. But we've also had a very significant increase in total population in Falls Church over the last five, ten years. It would be useful to make some comparable comparisons as, that type of methodology, for example, the amount of, of general government expenditures per, per capita, how that's grown, the number of, of general government personnel, and how that's grown relative to the population, the total population. We, we could go on with a number of indicators like that. And this can give us a better sense of the kind of balance I think that a number of people in this city are, are looking for, because it all focuses on the justification for, for the increase in, in the school expenditures. But there are a number of services, this, my fellow citizen here has raised some, I'll raise some very important ones. I noticed that now we're, we're spending for some improvements in the safety for the city along the major thoroughfares and where businesses are involved. But I can tell you that the streets and the sidewalks and the residential areas in the city, certainly the quadrant that I live in, are in horrible shape. I've been walking these streets and sidewalks, they're all, the sidewalks are all broken. We have, we have also a, a growing elderly population in the city, and people who may have to use wheelchairs. They should be able to use the sidewalks. That's, even for, for, for a young person, you stumble over the sidewalks, there are all the broken sidewalks, the patched sidewalks. I notice all the streets are cracked and broken. A big issue that you have raised in, in the most recent city council meeting is the, is the stormwater sewer system. Now, we have a stormwater enterprise set up with, with fees, but if I recall correctly, a number of years ago, there was an estimate, when, when the watershed management plan was, was, was put together, we needed about twenty-five million dollars. I don't know whether that figure has changed, but to, but to, just to bring our, our stormwater system up to date, and now, we have a big project here, and, and we And now we have a big project here and, and, and we have another project, but if I recall, there were at least 10 critical projects that, and I don't know how many of those are being addressed. I think maybe two, maybe I, perhaps more, but there were, there were a list of about 30 or 40 projects. And there are a lot of people in the city who are still suffering from, from flooding, from, from, uh, the problems in the stormwater system, uh, stormwater sewer system, which is continuing to deteriorate. Uh, we can go on and on. How much, uh, demand on the, for library services? The development model in this city has been one of encouraging population growth. Uh, but the, but I think that the fiscal impact model, which is, uh, supposed to judge the cost, is really underestimating the cost of, of this new development. What are the increased demands on the library? I mean, we, we talk about the increased demands on the schools. What are the increased demands on the library, on the parks, on the sidewalks, on, uh, all the other services that, that, that the city provides for all its citizens? Uh, I have not seen any analysis of that in the last three or four years that I've been, that I've been trying to follow these budget discussions. And I see a reluctance on the part of the city council to address these issues.
Well, let me speak to just a couple of things. One, uh, we have, um, in terms of population growth, in the period between 2010 and 2013, where we had no major projects coming in, in mixed use, we had a population growth of just over 10%. There's a lot of organic growth that's just happening in our neighborhoods and that's, that's a regional phenomenon, but that's happening in the city of Falls Church. In terms of walkability, that, that is a top priority for the city council. And we, uh, have been able to take advantage of regional funds. Vice Mayor Snyder is very active in our regional boards to try to bring state and federal funds to the city, uh, for improved sidewalks. And so our biggest focus right now is in our commercial districts. I mentioned the use of water sale proceeds to tie in North Washington Street. Uh, but an even bigger project that has already been approved is using state and federal funds for South Washington Street, which everybody knows needs major improvements to improve walkability there, um, and the aesthetics of it. And that's a project that is, that is in the preliminary engineering phase right now and we'll use state and federal funds for that. Uh, Mike Collins, our public works director, is here in the room and, and can provide more details on that. But lastly, I would just note, we have $200,000 in the proposed budget using sale, uh, water sale proceeds for traffic calming in the city. And that is to allow citizens to petition for traffic calming on their street, work through our, our citizens advisory board, and then implement those projects. And so we think that the, you know, the pipeline of state and federal funding is going to start to be more visible in the city. We're working to administer those projects right now. They're typically complicated, uh, but I think we're going to see some improvements there. Yes?
The traffic calming, I certainly agree that that's important, but I think that's just, that's just a part of the issue. The issue of safety is much more than that. Uh, I happen to live on Great Falls Street and there, there's no side, the, the, it's a very heavily used street together with Little Falls, come here, coming here to the community center, the farmer's market every Saturday, the, uh, mini festivals we have here in Cherry Hill Park, uh, the court system meets here. Those, those, and, and the parking to get from one side of, of, uh, one, the, the, where the allowed parking is on Great Falls Street to this particular area, the community center and the city hall, there is no, there is no crosswalk that one can access, whether it be the, the, the corner of, of, uh, of Little Falls and Great Falls. You can't get to that by sidewalk. The, if you go to the bike path, you can't get by that by sidewalk for anyone parking along that area. That is a, uh, it's a second, it's considered a secondary street, but I can tell you that's a very heavily trafficked street, very dangerous street. There are many, many, many accidents. Uh, many parked cars have gotten hit over the years. Right in front of my house, I've seen them, uh, numerous ones. Uh, so it's not just traffic calming, it's also, it's also the question of pedestrian, just pedestrian, uh, safety, being able to cross that street. There's, I think with the city for some reason does not want to put, uh, crosswalks with stoplights where there's no intersection. Well, that's, that, that, I'm, I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense in cases like Little Falls where there, there needs to be some sort of access, uh, where it would be helpful for lots of children, lots of people with children who cross that street. Uh, I'm, I'm sure there are other parts of the city. Uh, I, I know the area around, uh, uh, where the new Mason Row project is, that, that, that whole area also is a very dangerous area. And I think there have been some incidents there. I think we need to look at, at, at an overall, uh, issue, uh, uh, assessment of where the risks are for pedestrians, for motorists and so forth, and then do a comprehensive plan as we do a master plan for transportation of all types, uh, and reducing those risks.
Yep. Yes, sir. Is this on? Assuming that they would want us, would it be legally possible or feasible for Falls Church City to become consolidated and part of Arlington County? Arlington County?
Yeah, I think we default back to Fairfax, but I'll defer to, I'll defer to the city attorney on that one.
Could we become part of Arlington County?
I don't believe so.
That, that's out of the question? Why would that be out of the question?
I believe you go back to the jurisdiction from which you originally subdivided from. And, um, and so that's, we haven't had a comprehensive legal review of that, but that, that's my understanding of the sort of the basic, uh, on the surface reading of the law.
The county claimed East Falls Church in an annexation some time ago, so I don't know, maybe we could be annexed.
In the back?
A comment on the CIP. I am in favor of the library expansion and I am in favor of using some of our water sale proceeds to build the parking lot, but I would like the library and the parking lot to be two separate pieces. They're getting joined together and the parking lot would be for everybody.
That's right.
Not just the library. Maybe people could actually park up there and not get towed. That would be a good thing. Park there to go to the state theater. But I like the idea of using water sale proceeds for something that we've wanted forever and ever, but never had the money to do. That's it.
Thank you. And that, that is the way the CIP is presented.
And if I could just highlight Mr. Shields' earlier point, March 23rd, we'll be doing a full presentation to council on the CIP, all the projects, which does include some pedestrian accessibility. And we have done a full assessment of all our sidewalks and streets, but now the challenge is the funding and the staff resources to implement it, but we are trying to address that. By the 23rd, you'll get a full debrief of all the CIP projects and then have an opportunity for a public comment and Q and A as well. It's a regular council meeting, but we're going to do a CIP discussion per the mayor's request.
Yeah. Thank you, Cindy. Yes, sir.
And how homeowners help support the city. How do renters get impacted as far as supporting the school system and stuff?
So, I mean, their, their, their share, they, they pay rent to the landlords, the landlords pay property tax, so I, I think it's.
So that, that's buried in the rent that they're paying?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm asking probably stupid questions.
Could we have the per capita for, for residents of the, versus, uh, versus?
Could we have a, could we have a figure for the city for the per capita that apartment residents pay indirectly, uh, versus what single family homes pay? The median of each?
Well, what we, um, you know, what we have is just the share of overall assessed value by how, by housing type. We haven't broken it down on a per capita basis, but we could look into seeing if that's possible.
I have, oops, I have, the response to that is, in my day job, I analyze, do analyses for apartment projects. Um, and the amount of contribution per student from apartment projects exceeds most single family homes that have one child. Now, there are a lot of children in homes that have three children. Okay? So when you look at your taxes for a million dollar house, which comes to about a hundred or $13,500 a year, okay? On average, apartment projects pay more than that, um, on a per child basis.
By the proportion basis, that's the question I have.
Well, even the per, per unit basis, they're still very close. Um, and, you know.
It's the question, my question, original question was the services for the growth in the population.
Right.
It's always focused on the student. We, we, we need to talk about the total population and, and how that, uh, and expenditures per the population.
Right.
And, and revenues.
Well, one thing that I think is, uh, sort of a, just a basic thing in local government finance is that, uh, single family homeowners and all residents of the city, um, are subsidized by the commercial sector. And so, um, every residential unit in the city is a net fiscal loss on, for the local government. And that's true for apartments, it's for single family homes. Um, then that varies in terms of the value of your home, how many, you know, how much services you take advantage of. So it's, it's actually a fairly complex calculation of what you're trying to get at. But overall for the city, roughly half of our revenue comes in one form or the other from the commercial sector because of their, uh, utility taxes that they pay, the business licenses, uh, sales tax generation and all that type of activity. And so the commercial sector is very important for every local government in Virginia and it's very true for the city of Falls Church as well. And so increasing commerce or keeping a healthy commercial sector in the city is, is really important for our long-term financial sustainability. And so, uh, you know, bringing in a grocery store into our downtown area, which is going to attract more consumers, more shoppers to our downtown area, that's part of a larger vision to help our whole commercial sector thrive and grow in the city, which is, which is really important for our long-term sustainability.
That, that does address the issue of, of the growth in the population because you have, you're, you have people coming from other jurisdictions and hopefully so.
Right.
I mean, you're not depending just on the local population.
Exactly. We're trying to bring people from outside the city to do business in the city and, and that's.
But let me just piggyback on that. I think one of the things that's really important in the context here is to understand what a strange historical situation Falls Church had. You, I looked at census data from the 60s, late 60s into the 70s, and in all of Virginia, there were three jurisdictions during that time that experienced population declines. Falls Church, Alexandria and Arlington. Everybody else in Virginia saw growth, tremendous growth in the outline suburbs. So, again, I think there's sort of this, many people think the normal in Falls Church was a certain size and now we're getting much bigger than normal. But actually what you see is a huge trough in terms of the development of population and school age kids in, in Falls Church where in the mid 60s, it was here. And then there was this huge exodus. My only thought is that it's, it's people went out to the suburbs. And now you're seeing a huge inversion where people are realizing, you know, cities like DC, urban counties like Arlington, Tyson's Corner, Falls Church, that have more of an urban feel, better transportation, shorter commutes. So now you're, I, I think in many ways, population growth is sort of returning to normal as opposed to being a state of affairs that we should view as sort of strange and, and out of the ordinary. So, you know, I, I think that's, the, and this is, I'm no demographer and I'm no local historian, but I think if anybody is, I'd love to hear more about that because I think that's a really interesting kind of contextual aspect of, of where we are now. And frankly too, I think our location is so attractive that we're going to attract people just given equidistant between two major airports, proximity to Tysons, proximity to the district. I mean, we're basically in the bullseye of this region. And, and I think it's hard to say, can we just stay in the mid 70s with a stable population at or around 10,000?
But are we addressing this population growth and the demands other than the schools? That's the, that's my basic question. We're focusing on, on the school aspect of it. Are we addressing the non-school demands raised by this population growth in a, in a balanced way? That's, that's the central question.
Well, and, and I'll kick it over to Wyatt in a minute, but, but I think, you know, I, I've said that the schools can't exist without the city and the city can't exist without the schools. There is no schools as such. They're your neighbors with kids. Um, and to say that somehow you can un-mix schools and city, I, I think is, is, is not possible and I don't think it's a good way of conceptualizing. Do we have increased demands to meet? Absolutely. Is it going to be a challenge to meet them? I think it is. I, again, I'll go back to, if you look at just the, the mass that's possible for development, the George Mason project could yield, you know, if you want big tracts of land in Falls Church where you can do something significant, that's, that's the biggest game in town. So to, to your point of how do we address growing needs on all fronts, that's to me where all the signs are pointing as the most realistic option. But I, I mean, increased population of all kinds is going to create increased demands and it's going to be traffic, it's going to be transportation in general, it's going to be walkability because if everybody drives in Falls Church to do everything that they want to do and population keeps growing, you know, there are 72 lane miles and, I mean, 72 miles of road and how many? 400 odd lane miles?
400 plus.
You can't, you can't fit anything more than.
You're measuring those, those things.
And that's why I hand it off to, to Wyatt.
So what we will do.
Not for the others.
We, uh, we have that data and we'll put, put it on the website so you can see it. But just two, two quick statistics. From 2000, 2010, the city population grew by 18% and it's grown 10% more since 2010. And we have about 5% fewer staff today than we did in 2001. So you can see our, our population per staff member is, is, uh, much lower than it was just a decade ago. So one of the great challenges with local government is how you continue to maintain great services with fewer people and, and to do it in a way that's affordable. That's our management challenge. And it's, it's, uh, it's one that we can need this constant feedback from the community about how we're doing. Uh, but, but I think to your point, we'll show, we'll show that data.
And I'll just piggyback on Mr. Shields to say, you know, while there is a great deal of growth in the school system, population, you go back to that slide about relative shares of the budget, that hasn't changed. So it's not as if we went from 45, 48% to 60. So the schools and the city, and the general government components haven't gotten out of kilter. Um, you know, another statistic that's important to keep in mind when we're talking about closing the teacher pay gap, um, what is the increase of the, of the cost of closing the pay gap as planned, Dr. Jones, in terms of salaries? Is it?
About one year.
Yeah, for this year.
About 1.6 million.
But in percentage terms, what is that?
Oh, you're.
Percentage of what?
You know, how, how much are wages going up as a result of closing the pay?
About 7%.
But I, but I would also add, if I could, that, um, in closing the salary gap, that it, with our salary table, you can't say just 6 or 7%. Some of our teachers will see no increase this year at all, none, because they're in areas of the, of the salary plan where they're already competitive. There are teachers where there's a 20% gap where they're incredibly behind in our, in our neighbor, neighboring district. That is where the actual money is going. So you can't do an average and this pay plan was very strategic over these four years and it is very different than we've ever had in Falls Church before. And it is targeted on those teachers in the, in the areas where the gaps are widest. So that's, just to point that out.
So then the aggregate, the, the closing the pay gap in this targeted strategic way yields an increase in, in wages of approximately what percent?
Well, it depends. For some teachers, it may be zero to.
No, I'm talking in the aggregate. If you, all the money we're spending this year, last year on salaries versus how much we're proposing?
7%.
Okay.
Yep.
And it would be for, uh, 4.5% on the tax rate, right? 4, 4.5 cents on the tax rate to do so? 4 cents on, 4, 4.5 cents on the tax rate.
Well, 4 cent increase on the tax rate.
Aren't you proposing 134.5 on every?
We're at a dollar 30 and a half right now and we go to a dollar 34 and a half.
Okay, so this would be 4 cents on the tax rate.
And if I might add, it's not a pure 7% on the scale. And if I might add, it's not a pure 7% on the scale that is closing the gap because every school division in America, pretty much, has a step scale. So a normal step scale would be at least 3 to 3.5. That's, so when you look at the additional, it's really about an additional 3 and 1/2 in order to close the gap.
Hi, Hunter Kimball. I'm also a resident of the city, and I've got that hat on for the moment. And this is a question for Mr. Shields and Mr. LaCondre, and it has to do with cash flows. And I'm sure you will have a very, very good, clear answer for this. And it also touches on what the lady who teaches in Fairfax was mentioning in terms of, you know, last fall, when we were hearing that the debt, the new debt service that would come on for Mount Daniel would not impact the... What did I do? Did I do, is it me? Yeah, okay. That better? Perfect, okay. That last fall, it wasn't anticipated that the, that the new debt service on Mount Daniel would have an impact on the tax rate?
Just go ahead, keep talking.
Okay, tax rate with the anticipation that some of the proceeds from the sale of the water department would be invested in the pension fund, which would then give a return, which could then be used to pay for the new debt service. That was at least at some point a plan or, you know, somebody's understanding. It was floated out there. And I noticed from your presentation that the debt service on Mount Daniel will be about approximately $800,000 a year, that it's anticipated in FY '17, the fiscal year after next, we will start realizing, the city will start realizing a return on that investment of about $650,000 approximately. So we know that there will actually be a new revenue stream coming on, which at some point, you know, ostensibly, was thought to be a revenue source that could go to fund the debt service on Mount Daniel, which still leaves a gap in FY '16 to, you know, which is in your slide and was mentioned as one of the drivers, expense drivers on the new budget of about $816,000. I guess my question is, if, okay, you know, we've got this debt service coming on next year, but we know that we'll start realizing the return in FY '17, could, or has it ever been thought that perhaps the debt service in FY '16 next year could be seen as a one-time cost, something that will be, will see some relief in FY '17, which may be an appropriate, I hate to say it, but use of fund balance because you know that, you know, you could take a one-time hit to the fund balance next year, knowing that this new revenue stream is coming on to fill that, you know, to fill that expense.
Okay. And so, very glad to have Mr. LaCondre, our chief financial officer, here.
I don't know if we have an answer.
But this graph is also helpful to illustrate that. But let me let Mr. LaCondre answer the question, and then I will show how it shows up graphically in terms of the debt service projection.
It was anticipated that the savings from the pension or from investment of water proceeds into the pension fund would generate this $640,000, all right? But I'm not going to tell you that we could just call this a one-time. It is not one-time, okay? So you will recognize, you will realize the benefits of the investment in '17. The reason for that is, the way the investments were made, the actuarial study won't be done until the end of this fiscal year, which impacts the '17 fiscal year. So that's why you don't see it. And again, what the manager did, and what we did in constructing this budget, is we took into account that $808,000 in terms of how we were going to keep the tax rate flat and also pay the debt service.
So there's long-term smoothly involved in all of you.
Yes.
But just on the projection then, in 2017, with the, if you account for the return on investment for the money that was put into the pension fund, that does basically eat up all the new debt service for Mount Daniel. And so that's the reason that discussion was happening last fall, is that in terms of the long-range plan, that investment will have that effect if everything goes according to plan. But those investment returns in the pension fund, we need to evaluate those each year based on what actually happens. It's reasonable to project over the long term, they're going to average $640,000 per year, but they will vary from year to year. That's just the nature of it.
Thank you. At the end of all this, and we've all had, most of us have had to say, I think what I'm taking from the people up front is, we're going to stay the course, is that right? We're going to stay the, we're going to follow this course. I just want to know, right? Pretty much?
In terms of the capital program?
Yeah, what we're doing here.
We, the capital plan is our best look at...
We're going to stay the course.
Meeting the needs that we have. The city council is going to evaluate this capital plan, and then upon, if it's adopted in '27, then that is our plan.
That's a fair answer. Fair answer.
Okay. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. I know the mayor may have some comments in a minute. Dave Snyder, vice mayor, I wanted to add additional perspective. First of all, this is one of the best town hall meetings I think we've ever had because people have come out and they've expressed their concerns clearly at the beginning of the process. So that's extremely helpful to all of us in the decision-making area. And so keep up your involvement and your participation in your questions because I've been taking notes and we all have. By the way, Mary Beth Conley, an additional member of city council, who wasn't introduced earlier. We have a lot of other city officials. I know we had Tom Clinton, Lindy Hockenberry, I mean, lots of folks here are here to listen to what you have to say. I will say one thing about a regional trend that I see, and I work with our colleagues on regional transportation, emergency preparedness bodies, whatever, on a regular basis. What I'm starting to see is that Arlington and Fairfax are beginning to deal with some of the realities that Falls Church has had to deal with earlier and in a more stark way, if you will. I think what you're seeing in Arlington is the advantage that they got from the orange line, which were tremendous over a number of years, are starting to be exhausted. They have less land to develop next to the rail stations. So you're starting to see pressure in Arlington that's going to resemble more the realities, the economic realities that we have in Falls Church. I also note that our colleagues in Fairfax County have announced a new major economic development initiative. They never really had to do that before, and the reason why is, the hidden subsidies perhaps from the federal government that you could see in the Dulles Corridor are starting to wind down perhaps. So I'm not sure that the answer is necessarily tying ourselves to wagons, which may end up going in the same or even worse directions in the future. I do think, however, that the comments that have been made are being taken to heart and taken very seriously. As we work on the budget, we'll be paying particular attention to that. I do want to say, however, two things. First of all, I've not had kids in the schools for nearly a decade. I will tell you that my kids were better educated than all of their peers from Northern Virginia, wherever they came from, and that has value. The second point I would make is, we have a little bit of a liquidity issue because the public investments that everybody is making actually builds long-term wealth for those of us who own real estate in the city, and most of us do, one way or the other. So there's sort of that dynamic to keep in touch with. Finally, I will add one other thing about city services. I walked to the East Falls Church metro. I will tell you repeatedly over the course of this winter season, hopefully it's now come to an end, although who knows? I will tell you, there was a stark difference in the condition of the roads in Falls Church, where I could walk on those roads, versus the minute that I went into Arlington, it became an absolute hazard to walk. So, and I also think our police response times are significantly better than any other place in the region. So with all due respect, there are issues with services, we're going to try to improve them, but I think we've got some pretty good services in key areas that I think need to be taken account of. And I do believe that we've got to maintain the quality of the schools, but I do believe as well that the fundamental question, which I asked during the hearing and which is going to come up repeatedly, why do things cost so much and what can we do to maintain quality and still reduce the cost? So I want to thank everyone for being here and your input is being taken very seriously.
In the back here, and then we'll go then.
Anyway, to me, I was just saying to Hunter, did anybody mention in the presentation, because I came in late, that we do own our roads and we are not serviced by VDOT. Being a city, we own all of our roads, and that is a very, very big thing to us. And of course, we try to, but we don't get the same type of VDOT services that other people get, but we do a pretty darn good job of that.
As an independent city, we do take care of all of our streets. On one hand, that's a big burden. We do get some money from VDOT. We don't get anywhere near enough. But I recall our neighboring supervisor wrote a letter in the news press one time saying to all of her constituents, you know, why do you, why are City of Falls Church streets in such better condition than Fairfax County streets? And the reason is, she blamed VDOT. And we've got, we want to do better on our streets in terms of walkability, and having local control is a good thing. It allows us to go with our regional leadership to be able to get money, bring it here, and focus it on what our needs are. And I think we're going to see momentum gathering on that in terms of these projects being rolled out, starting with our commercial districts, but then, you know, stretching out from there throughout our neighborhoods as well.
As I bring the mic, the one good thing with the transportation money, a lot of it's collected locally and it stays locally instead of going to Richmond.
Right.
Hello, I'm Tony Cincotta. I've had four kids go through the school system. Oh, worked fine. The only reason why I made a comment, we had a comment on traffic coming.
Yes.
I come from the Yonkers area, I'm with the Yonkers outside of New York, and traffic coming. The thing, when I was a kid, when you cross the street, I believe the cars have, have to run away. So if you see a car coming, you don't go, you walk. And I find that does pretty well. Now, I notice in the city we have traffic coming, we have these borders, these, I guess, that keep the cars off the end of the street because if a bump's in the road. We have signs. I mean, I do a lot, I do a lot of walking in the city, in fact, most times I walk. We have signs, I bet we have signs nobody has ever seen. You're not going to see them if you're driving. When you're driving, you're going straight. I find driving in the city is really dangerous. It's dangerous because I spend most of my time looking at the speedometer. Shouldn't go over 25. And anyway, I do most of my walking for no reason. I like to make the comment, if we had the rule that the streets have, oh, one last thing, we now have these bus things where if the car's coming, the car starts to stop and you keep, of course. I find that's very dangerous. You're going to walk in front of a stop car. I always, I always kind of wave them on, but most times they don't, they stop. They're only going to walk around the back of the... My comment is, maybe the same money, I'm a conservative also, the same money, I suggest we teach everybody how to walk. Really. Traffic coming, okay? Anyway.
Well, we've got a lot of walkers in our community. Our mayor is one of our great walkers of the city, and he sends me notes every day about things we can do better in terms of our walkability in the city. What we, we'll have one more question here, and then after that, we'll be here for further discussion or questions. And, yes, sir?
Just want to, this gentleman used a word that I think is very important in your budget presentation, and that's balanced approach. I don't view what you've presented today as a balanced approach. It's, I'm going to walk out here, 98% of the conversation had to do with justifying money toward the school and everything. Like I say, I don't have anything, please believe me, I support education 100%, but I'm also hearing you guys are listening, taking notes, you're listening. You said you'll provide maybe some of the data he's looking for on the website. I don't think that's good enough. I think this, if you're really listening, and there's not a lot of people here, and there's probably a lot of people, if they do bother to watch the, you say you're taping this, are probably going to say, you know, who's this jerk, what's been talking? But I got a feeling there's a lot of people that support what, some stuff you've been hearing here, that they're not here.
Yeah.
Your presentation, I got a feeling if I didn't say anything, or none of this had been said, if I come back to your next meeting, it'd be the same thing again you're going to present. So if you're really listening, you need to change this presentation and start showing, not all residents are 100%. Their drive for living here has got to do with the school system. There's other reasons for living here, and you need to acknowledge that and present that in your budget and let us feel like, hey, yeah, they're looking out for us also. So I just think his word, balanced approach, this is not balanced.
Well, I would just respond though, if you look at the balance and the historical share between general government and the schools, you know, let me know what you don't think is balanced, because those numbers are telling me...
You're not explaining enough, maybe to alleviate some of my concerns about, what are you, what are you doing for me? You know, I'm paying a lot of money to live here, a lot of money. The gentleman threw out a tax figure there, I'm right in that realm, okay? So it's expensive to live here. And like I said before, I lived in Arlington, it's expensive to live there too, but I also felt as a citizen, I was getting more for my money than I'm getting here.
Okay.
Okay? Good point.
And I would encourage you to come on Monday night to, you know, really engage with our department directors about local services. And so we will wrap up now, and again, we'll stay for a few more minutes to take any further questions or comments offline. Mayor?
Yeah, not too much more to add. We thank you all for coming out today. This is the start of the process. As you heard, I know there's not full satisfaction what you heard today, then come on, come on again. You can talk to any of us privately, by email, by phone. We do want to hear what you have to say. We want to hear what the rest of the city has to say. We have 15, 20 people here today. We want to hear what everyone has to say. So please contact us or attend public hearings. We do care what you have to say. You have a majority of city council here today, listening and taking notes to what we've heard today. We thank you, and I ask that you stay involved in the process.
Thank you all, and have a great Saturday.